Good morning. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission meeting for May 28, 2013. If you would stand with us, please. Pettis Reed will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Pettis?
Shall we pray? Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for this day that we've had. Father, we're so thankful for the many things we have here in this county and this country. But may we always remember that the blessings that we do have come from you. We ask that you be with us as we go through this meeting, give us the ability to make good decisions, watch over us, protect us, and guide us, and we offer this prayer in our son's holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. You ready to call the row, Gail?
I am not.
We will wait on you. While Gail's going to her seat, we might as well go to the next item, and that's the approval of the minutes for our April meeting. Call on Vice Chair Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I do make a motion. Do we approve the April 22 minutes and the April 8 minutes? So I'll make that motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the April minutes of our meetings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And motion carries. Ready? Gail?
Pettis Reed?
Here.
Jeff Phillips?
Present.
Steve Sandlin? Mike Vaught? Craig Lynch? Rhonda Allen? Veronica Buchanan?
Here.
Jim Everwater?
Here.
Mike Kush?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Gail.
I'm here, too. Yeah, I thought there was something funny about you. We missed your name, didn't we?
Yeah. You're not here.
I can lay.
Any items withdrawn or deferred, Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there is one item that we are going to pull off the agenda. It's the Item A, Under Submitted For Final Plat Approval, Mark and Linda Scolar. You'll recall, this was actually on the previous Planning Commission agenda, but was also pulled. They're still having some issues on the plat working with just, I believe it's the groundwater folks, trying to work out the issues they have there before moving the plat forward. So they just don't see any point of doing that until they have those issues resolved. So we will not consider that today.
Okay, thank you. Waiver request. Item A, Chris Hancock. Item 134004 is requesting a waiver from a distance requirements for fire hydrants for subdivision lots on property located at 1503 Reddville Street. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Reddville Street. It's on the north side. It extends off to the west of North Lassiter Barker Road, which is right at the county line with Rutherford and Cannon County. There's an existing house on the property. The house has been removed. The applicant's proposing to basically subdivide a portion of that lot where the existing house was, about two acres or so, to give to their, I believe it's to their son, to build a new house. They'd have to install new septic lines. However, since he's installing a new, basically creating a new lot, they are subject to the subdivision regulations and would have to put a fire hydrant within 1,000 feet of all lots. According to information provided by both the surveyor and Consolidated Utility District, the nearest fire hydrant is over, basically it's over three miles away, and the water line that serves that property cannot support a hydrant. So with that, again, this is really just, there's one house there, there's going to be another house there at some point. They're not, it's not a large-scale development by any means. But before they do any plats or anything like that, they just want to see if they could get the waiver. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
If the water line cannot support a hydrant, I don't have any problem making a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Item 7B, City of Murfreesboro property, Item 132018, minor final plat on one lot on 1.68 acres, zoned RM, located along Old Nashville Highway, City of Murfreesboro applicant. Includes a request for a fire hydrant waiver. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Old Nashville Highway. It's on the west side, just past the intersection of Old Nashville Highway and Asbury Road. The City of Murfreesboro has purchased this property for the purpose of installing what's called an odor elimination station for the sanitary sewer system. We do have Ms. Valerie Smith here with the, with Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department. They can go into a little more detail about that, particular, the workings of that system. The station does require a special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals, which will be on their June 12, 2013, meeting. We're not looking at approving the station at this point. They will be required to submit a site plan, which will be brought to your next meeting, well, probably the next day meeting for your review. But all we're looking at here is the approval of the plat of the property. The plat does appear in good order. However, there is not a fire hydrant within 1,000 feet. And information provided by CUD indicates that that water line cannot support a fire hydrant. Now, just that being said, this is not a building and a structure that's going to be for human occupancy. It's really, there's an area there where people can go in now, but it's not for living purposes or anything like that. So besides that issue, the plat does appear to be in good order. Again, we do have representatives from the city here that can help answer any questions that you may have.
Is there anything, the codes, that makes it be sprinkled?
For this size of a structure, I'm not aware of anything, but that's something that, you know, as we go through the site plan process, that they'll have to work through. Okay. Murfreesboro Water and Sewer, Valerie Smith said she doesn't anticipate that being an issue.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve the request and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Doug. Submitted for site plan approval, Item 8A, Jefferson Pike Storage Phase 2, Item 133013, new construction of 22,200 square feet, approximately 146 units, on 8.85 acres, zoned commercial services, located at 802 West Jefferson Pike. Benny Hamlet, applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along West Jefferson Pike. It's about 3/4 of a mile west of the intersection of West Jefferson Pike and Lebanon Road. The zoning of this property was first approved back in November of 2009 as what's called services under our old zoning code, and the site plan for Phase 1 was approved in May of 2010. This property is currently zoned commercial services under the new zoning code. It is still governed, however, by the conditional use permit approved back in 2009. One of the conditions of the permit that was originally approved was that right-of-way dedication be made along West Jefferson Pike. It doesn't appear at this point that that's been done, but speaking with the applicant's design engineer prior to the meeting, they indicated that that shouldn't be any kind of a real issue with them, and that would be for the eventual widening of West Jefferson Pike, which at this point is still kind of an undetermined timeframe. This, again, this land would need to be dedicated before any building permits are issued. There were a number of comments that we had. There were some engineering items that I'll let Mr. Corbett discuss here just momentarily. As far as the revised plan goes, everything appears to be in good order. There is just one item, if you look on your monitor, the, of course, the zoning in the area under the new code has changed. It looks like they pretty much got it everywhere else. They just missed one right here where it says zoned R-50. It's actually RM now. That's a pretty minor fix. Also, I will show that the landscaping, being that this is an extension of what they're proposing as being Phase 1 here, a couple of existing buildings, they still have a few buildings that they haven't built in Phase 1, and these are the buildings for Phase 2. They are going to have to extend the landscape buffer. This does appear, looking at, to meet our criteria. You'll remember on the backside, this covered boat storage was actually, the back wall here was actually used as part of the buffer when they came through originally. But they have extended the buffer area here, and it appears to be in good order as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Corbett with any engineering comments.
Yeah, one of the things they had to do was modify their pond and their drainage to meet the new requirements under our new stormwater regulations, and they have done that, and they worked with us closely on that, made the changes that we needed, and now meets our requirements. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Dan.
I'm curious, if we approved this in the past contingent upon a few things such as right-of-way, you know, conveying the right-of-way, how have they been able for business today to convey the right-of-way? Did we drop the ball somewhere or what? Because if there was only one phase, we would have never gotten that right-of-way dedicated.
At this, I mean, I think it was, it just may have been one of those things that did get overlooked before the permits were issued, and since we do have another phase, this was a good time to get it. So we'll be more aware of that in the future. I think it just kind of snuck under the radar with us.
Maybe it had to be something that we just, somebody thinks somebody else will take care of, I mean, just sliding through the cracks because we've been, you know, requiring on these state highways at least a dedication right-of-way, and I'd hate to see that not to have been followed through on. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve. Any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And motion carries. Item number nine on our agenda, staff reports. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. You'll notice under Staff Reports, Another Business, we have a continuation of our work session to discuss the draft of the subdivision regulations. You recall our last meeting, there were basically four items that we were discussing at that time, one being the road sections as far as, you know, type, how much right-of-way to require sidewalks. You recall that there was some discussion about that. We'll start off with that, but I'll go over the others. Where the sprinkler system requirements, which we'll have some more discussion on. Also, there was some discussion about the bonding requirements as well as the eight-inch base as opposed to a six-inch base for the roads, which we currently use, you know, making that change to eight-inch. Those were the outstanding issues as we have identified them. Really, I think we've got even those narrowed down to two, basically the revised cross-sections for the roads and then the sprinkler requirements, you know, how we're going to move forward with that, if we're going to move forward with that. So I think to start out, we'll go ahead and do the road sections. We have a couple of revised sections here. I'll let Mr. Corbett kind of lead the discussion. We also have our consultant, Mr. Brett Smith, here to help with that as well. So, yeah, which one do you want?
Let me have the little mousey there. He's going to switch seats easier. Okay. I'll have to lower the seat a little bit. Okay, on the cross-section, you'll notice a couple of things. On the sidewalk, what we've done here is we put the sidewalk at the rear of the, the right-of-way that's existing, but we've given the grass strip a four to seven-foot variance. What that does is give the developer and the board here a chance to look at those and determine how you want to put that sidewalk. You want to put it back four feet up to seven feet back, and we just thought that would give some, instead of, you know, putting a concrete rule in there, gives some variance to the designer, how they want to do it. And again, this, this material is listed down here as basically what we've gone through before, so that's basically the changes that we have in there on this particular cross-section. So if we want to get back into the sidewalk discussion, or do you want to change this, or how do you want to go forward from that?
There's also, there's one on here, too, that shows, it's more for display purposes or anything. Want to click that?
This one here?
Yeah.
This one here?
Yeah.
This is, this is a drawing that our consultant did, just an idea of how it might look like if you use, depending on how you use it, you know, the closer to the road you get, the less you're able to put trees. If you've got the seven-foot strip in there, you might want to put some decorative trees and have the sidewalk on that. The road commissioner, highway commissioner is not here today, but we've talked extensively with him. He has, we, has no problem now where we put the sidewalk into the right-of-way or not. So this, just an example of what it might look at.
Talking with Mr. Smith about this, he did say that this is not, this particular slide here is not to encourage requiring trees. It was really more for just a schematic, just to show what a tree might look like in that area. This is all this as far as, for the schematic, just to show that.
Of course, we're not requiring sidewalks either.
Right.
That's correct.
Just if something comes in with sidewalk, to have some guidelines as far as how to lay them out.
Right, correct.
Dale, what kinds of things will influence the width of that grassy strip?
Well, one thing would be major trees. If you're going to have one in there, you've got a problem with roots breaking them up, that kind of stuff.
So is that really then at the developer's discretion?
Well, the way we look at it is they may bring in the idea for trees. It's up to you and probably consult with the highway department, are you going to allow them, and so what kind? Some of the trees will have a deeper root system and won't create a problem. Some of the ones that are actually more decorative look to have a kind of a shallow root system. If you walk around town, you'll see a lot of sidewalks where the roots are pushed up the sidewalk and broken them up and that kind of stuff. And so that's what you'll have to evaluate as you, you look at these things.
The not requiring the trees would be more, I think it'd be more advantageous not even letting them put trees there. Forget the roots, the limbs are going out. They're going to be in the street.
Be in the street, you have a problem with leaves and, you know, clean up.
Between the sidewalk and the street, they're going to be in the street.
Right. But that's, again, that's up to your discretion, how you want to perceive of that. If you go in some of the old subdivisions, mostly in town, but some of the others, and you've got a street line with trees, it's always picturesque and people have an idea of, you know, living Americana-type life with the over trees and stuff. I've found that if they get too overbearing, pretty soon it's all shade, and for me, that's not really attractive, but it is to a lot of people.
Of course. We can't be out there patrolling constantly and two years after the house sold, the homeowner could go plant trees.
Exactly.
There's an 18-inch gap in there for that matter. What about, I missed last month's meeting, or two weeks ago meeting, but the eight inches of rock instead of six inch, that's, that's a change, is it not?
That's correct.
Have we had trouble with road beds in the past?
Yeah, the, and again, this came from Mr. Brooks and his experience. If you ask for six inch, it's difficult, we can inspect rock tickets. I mean, we can calculate how much rock is supposed to go for an X amount of length of road and stuff, but it's difficult to inspect the depth of the rock. And so what's happened, a lot of times if you ask for six, you may get four, depending on if you've got a hump of rock, or, you know, you may get a little more, but it'll average out okay. And if you get, when you get the rocks too thin, your road tends to deteriorate a little quicker, and you've got a higher maintenance still. There's a lot of communities around the area, we did some calling, who do with the eight, eight inches. And again, you'll get a variance once you put in there, maybe six to nine or 10 inches, but it gives you a better bed for that rock. It lasts longer, and your maintenance cost and frequency goes down by the additional amount. And in dealing with Mr. Brooks, that's his preference. I agree with him. It's, again, it's up to you. There's an additional cost to the people who are putting in the roads. We're looking for a better quality for the county to minimize or at least lengthen out the maintenance periods we have to do on these roads.
I see, Dale, it seems like many of the failures that I see in roads are at utility crossings and that sort of thing, which are, of course, backfilled with gravel, and the gravel might be several feet deep. So in my mind, it is, shows that more gravel's not necessarily better in this case. I can see that the developers are going to have to take out two inches more dirt, get rid of that dirt somewhere, and then haul in 33% more rock, which we better open up some more rock quarries if, if we're going to go that route. That's, that's a huge amount of rock. If our failures are because it's not done right, then there must be a failure in our inspection process or something in quality control rather than, rather than the process. I mean, it seems like you're, you're waving a mighty heavy stick because some people aren't doing their job right. Obviously, it's the excavators or whoever it is that's supposed to be doing this, but we have to enforce and, and make sure these, these guys are just doing it like they're supposed to do it, in my mind. I don't see that throwing more rock at it's going to be the answer to it necessarily.
Dale, has there been any studies on this particular, the depth of the rock and things of that sort, or have y'all just noticed the roads weren't out as fast?
Well, again, we're going back to the experience of Mr. Brooks. You know, he did the paving for many years, and his preferences for the eight rock. The, as far as the inspector, you know, we got one inspector that covers the whole county. And so at the times when they're going full bore, it's, I'm not, I don't make, I'm not telling you that the inspector, but he's not going to be on each job full-time because he has so many spots to make. And so we decided to use the rock tickets as our calculating to at least get the amount of tonnage that we know they've got to have out there. We have had to dig up roads, and we've found some were, they were built in properly by the, whoever was doing the work, but by then the county's already inspected, accepted the roads, and it becomes a cost. This is, again, this is a suggestion by Mr. Brooks and the way he would prefer it, to minimize those costs.
Well, I know five, six years ago, we had a lot of problems. I know at, like Lofton Farms, I believe, wasn't that them? That's the name of it, down past you, Mike?
Thompson.
Thompson Farms, yeah, off Lofton Road. That was a nightmare in there. I guess it's all fixed now, but there's a lot of these roads we're pumping, and now with two inches more gravel, it fixed that, in your opinion?
It will help. It wasn't necessarily, some of the problems we had there were, were construction problems that Mr. Everwater said. We've, we've had, had them in that area, dig up those roads, redo them, repatch, you know, redo sections, not just a patching of, in case. The utility crossings, you know, you do get failures in that. A lot of times it's, you don't get as much compaction because you just have a, a certain width that you have on there, and you're using just an individual compactor, you don't get quite as much when you do that as you do the other, and it's, you know, we're just having to deal with that.
What other communities are starting to use the eight-inch road?
Well, we checked, Franklin, I think, is using it, Williamson County over there. There's some of the others that these guys checked around the area, use those eight-inch rock. Our consultant actually has a wider base of experience dealing with other communities as far as the rock. He might have some answers for all of that. You want to come over and?
Answer that question. I don't have that one right off.
Okay.
I mean, it, it varies. Dale, what is it? Dale, do we know what Murfreesboro is smart as?
First, do you remember what road base thickness is?
Six on subdivision. All capital permanent projects are eighth.
This might be worthy of some input from some of our local engineers to see kind of what they have seen in evaluating subdivisions that they've designed or whatever, in my mind. Maybe Huddlestone and SEC could come and comment on what they see.
Are there any difference in subdivision streets? Some of them are going to become through the streets, more or less. Some of them are going to be secondary streets.
That's correct.
You know, and, and I could see probably the more gravel on the busier streets and the less on the secondary or the?
Cul-de-sacs.
Cul-de-sacs and things like that. I don't know if that gets too complicated on trying to figure out where the rock went and things like that, but窄 little streets that got six houses on them, they don't get the traffic. But if it's one that's feeding back through to 400 more houses, it's going to get tore up, and maybe we could look at something like that.
Yeah, we can come up with another cross-section. It'll be, the challenge will be coming up with the numbers as to where you do one and you don't do the other. We can look at that. I don't, I don't have a problem with input from the engineers. I expected to get that when we do the public hearing, to get their input. We've talked to them, and a couple of them said that's when they'll show up. I do think you need to consider Mr. Brooks's opinion quite a bit. After all, road, highway departments want to accept the roads, and they might, they want it in a certain kind of condition, so. But anyway, whatever you'd like, if you'd like, just come back at the next meeting. I'll try to, I can talk to Alson Steele, our SEC, who do most of our work, and ask them if they can have a representative here to talk about it and give their opinion on it.
Well, can you also run it by Mr. Brooks, that, you know, the option?
Sure.
Versus the high traffic and?
We've, we've had several meetings, and it's not a problem.
If we work out a couple of things today, when is the public hearing?
Well, we really don't have it set at this point. If there's a requirement in state law, we have to have a 30-day notice for a public hearing. So if you were to agree with everything today and said, okay, let's go ahead and move this forward, the earliest we would do it probably be our July night meeting, which I think is July the 8th. But again, whatever, whatever date we decide on, we have to, or whenever we decide on all the issues, we have to have at least a 30-day notice for the public hearing. And understand as well that the subdivision regulations don't go any further than this body. Once the Planning Commission approves it, they're approved. They don't have to go to the county commission.
Real quickly, since I'm talking from the back. Brett Smith, a couple of things. We can find out what the different base sections are. I want to look at what the other counties are and what the city has. We've heard that one. The idea of having different road sections for different road types may have merit. You know, we have the preliminary plan. What we're looking at right here is the local street. This is the one that's the residential street. You may, in a larger subdivision or larger development, have collector roads or roads that feed a lot of it, and that may be on the preliminary plan where we identify. You know, the preliminary plan's kind of the big concept y'all are looking at now, your new purview. That may be where we identify the different road types, and we nail that out. This is going to be a local street. We all know it's going to be this section. This is going to be a collector or some other type of road, and we know it's going to be this base section. And that should be identified early on in that big master plan, so that as those roads are built, you know what sections you have. And so that may be a really good point as a way to do that. But we can come back next meeting or, or give to state, work with staff and tell you what the base sections are for the different communities, if you'd like to know a comparison.
Well, I've got a little bit of experience at some of this stuff, and rock prices have skyrocketed the last few years. And if we start making the developers put in a third more gravel, it's going to get passed right on to the home buyers, and, and so I just want to make sure we're not just throwing money away just to be throwing it away, because gravel's about $400 a truckload these days, and that gets pretty expensive pretty quick.
I will, I will say this. What we try to look at when we propose one of these, we don't look at the cost involved because for us to make a, a judgment on the cost from a developer's standpoint is your own issue. We don't know what base they have or whatever. Our point is to try to present to you what we think is, is the best product overall for the county. And can, I don't know, I'm not coming through on this. So, you know, that's up to you and how you, how you evaluate the numbers and the drawings that we give you. I will tell you that we do not look at the cost of doing these items.
Well, eight inches of gravel is definitely better than six, but 12 is better than eight. And a foot of asphalt on top, that would be the best, but, or 18 inches, but we're not building a landing strip here for 747s, you know. Personally, I'm going to put the economics into part of it because it goes back to the back tires and the home.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that, but if we do an economic evaluation, that's good that day that we do it. You understand? Because of fluctuations in cost. And so it's not, I don't think it's our office to get into the economics of these things. It's up to you guys to consider. It's also the developer to determine that when he's doing his project.
I think it's a good compromise to collect the roads and?
So we'll come back to you with looking at what the surrounding county has, the report, and the different cross-sections based on what our, our consultant just said. See how you like that at our next meeting.
Invite someone from SEC to comment on it.
Right, and we'll invite spokesmen from the local engineering firms to give their opinion on it.
Okay. That'll be at our 6:00 PM meeting on June 10th.
It's at the, oh, yeah. Now, this section is basically just one with ditches in it, so it, the main, again, the main thing is the change in the rock. Okay. You want to get back over? Okay, where do we want to go?
The other item that we had some discussion on at our last Planning Commission meeting The other item that we had some discussion on at our last planning commission meeting regarded the, excuse me, sprinkler system requirements.
Did we finish with the sidewalk discussion?
I'm not sure if we did or not.
Not sure we did either.
Okay, I'll, I'll hold off on that then.
Hey, let's, let's make sure we did that. Anybody have comments on the, the?
Do we nail it down a four to seven-foot variance from, to, to the sidewalk? Is that what we're, is that what we're trying?
That's what we're proposing, um, unless you wanted to change that.
I don't think so.
I don't think we need a motion. I mean, at this point, all we're, this is just what we're putting in the draft.
And that's what we're going to public hearing with?
Right. And if, I mean, if there's a consensus that that, everybody's okay, we'll go with a public hearing on that, then that's what we'll do. Uh, I mean, we're not voting to accept these regulations at this point. We're still a little ways off from that.
Right, and this is not requiring so sidewalks. If they bring them in, this is what, with some guidelines for them to use and put in their sidewalk. And they may still bring in the PUDs and stuff and ask that you do different than that because they have that option when you propose those.
And, and the sidewalks are wide enough for wheelchairs. It's not a narrow sidewalk with the rest of?
Yeah, we have in there that if, if sidewalks are provided there to be constructed ADA standards.
Okay. I think there's two ways to do it. In that if it's a narrow sidewalk and every so often, like a landing on it, you can have a wider spot or something. I'm talking about to meet people meet.
Yeah, for like a passing area, right?
Thank you.
All right. Okay, now we'll go to the sprinkler requirements. Uh, you'll recall at our last meeting there, we, we've had quite a bit of discussion on this particular item with the sprinkler regulations. Uh, I will say, uh, just, uh, prior to getting into the memo that I prepared, it's on your tables, uh, I had Ms. Johnson Naes pass out some information that we received, uh, just late last week. Uh, you should have a copy of that. I'm not planning on going into that. Uh, I'll be quite frank, I haven't had a chance to really adequately review it at this point, but there were a couple of things that were brought in and we have disseminated those to you just for your information. Uh, the issues that we discussed regarding the sprinkler system, again, what I wanted to do in this memo and what I, at least what I attempted to do, I wanted to lay out what our current regulations were, uh, and you've got that on the, basically starting on the first page of the memo. And then after that, put in what our proposed regulations are. And what you'll notice again is, is what we discussed at our, our last meeting is really the, the only change that we're proposing to make based on what's currently in effect is changing all major subdivisions to all subdivisions. And then, and that's item C. Item B was reworded just a little bit, but it does say the same thing, uh, basically just saying that all lots have to be within 1,000 feet of a fire hydrant. So that, while the wording's a little different, the regulation is, is still the same. So I laid out what's proposed and I laid out what we currently have existing. Now, based on discussions we had at our last planning commission meeting, the commission asked that we come back with a couple of alternatives to the all subdivision requirement. And that's what I've attempted to do here under the alternatives section there. Uh, the way I see it, based on the discussion we had, uh, there are two alternatives that I can see that would work, that would pretty much make this regulation, as we're proposing it, similar, if not almost identical to what we currently have on the books. The first would be to change item C, which would say all subdivisions. It would actually change it to include only subdivisions with four or more lots. Uh, and you'll see that, uh, on the, the second full page there, it says in all subdivision, four or more lots. That's how we would change that wording. Uh, again, the, the big reason for this change having to be worded that way, under our proposed regulations, major and minor plats will no longer be determined by the number of lots as they currently are. It's basically done by the type of improvement that's being made. If you use that particular language above, this regulation would be pretty much identical to what we currently do now. Uh, any major subdivision currently being four or more lots. Uh, the only issue I had with that, and I kinda laid it out here and even mentioned it at the last meeting, is, uh, looking at it, four may be kind of seen as an arbitrary number. We just kinda picked four, why not pick three or five or something like that? Why'd we pick four? Of course, we could explain the reason being is because we used to look at major subdivisions as four or more. We're trying to keep it identical. I just had some, a little bit of concern with that. The alternative that personally I prefer would be to change item C to exempt partitions. Uh, partitions are defined, and I won't read the whole definition, but basically it's a division of land fronting an existing street that creates not more than two lots. Generally partitions that don't require waivers are those plats that we can approve administratively. They don't have to come before you. Now, the, the biggest issue that we have with that is when a partition requires a waiver of some sort, be it fire hydrant or any other kind of waiver, they automatically become a minor subdivision. They kick it up into the next level, if you will. Uh, because of that, I think the proposed wording that I'm showing on the, the last, the back of the last page there, uh, this would apply with all subdivisions with the exception of partitions as defined in the subdivision regulations that are deemed to be minor or major plats due to the need for a fire hydrant waiver. That way, if we do see a partition that does require a fire hydrant waiver, while it still has to come to the planning commission for that waiver and for plat approval, those items with the sprinkler systems are concerned would not apply to that particular situation. Again, for all intents and purposes, it would function pretty much the way our regulations function today. Um, I can only think of a couple of major subdivisions that have been approved with the sprinkler requirement, uh, really, really, I think just one. One of them I know was done prior to the regulation taking effect. It was something that the developer voluntarily did. Um, most of the, the vast majority, I would say, of the fire hydrant waivers that we see are of those one-lot varieties, two-lot varieties where someone's trying to carve a couple acres off of a larger tract and, uh, there's not adequate water in front to support a hydrant. That's where the vast majority of the fire hydrant waivers we have come from. So I don't expect, even with either alternative we choose here, I don't expect that we're just gonna see a lot of changes to the type of requests that you see here for the fire hydrant waivers. Also, I think that this second alternative, uh, it's, it can be seen as less arbitrary, in my opinion, because we're linking it to a type of plat as opposed to just a certain number of lots. So that's, uh, what staff's preference is if we keep this regulation. Now, I didn't put a third alternative in here because I was really just looking at it from a sprinkler perspective, but another alternative that you do have would be just to take it out of the subdivision regulations entirely. Uh, again, I will say that these regulations are in effect currently, uh, and we just haven't had. I can think of one situation personally that we looked at. It was a four-lot subdivision off of a private easement. There were, it seemed like there were two or three existing houses off it, but that, there was one extra lot in there that kicked it into a major subdivision where that house had to be, uh, sprinkled whenever it was permitted. Uh, we have seen a couple of major subdivisions that way, and I think Mr. Jones has some numbers to that effect, but, uh, we just don't see that many requests for the sprinkler systems, for the mandatory ones that this would kick in because of the regulation. They're just, we just don't see many of them. So that's what, what I tried to accomplish with this memo. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And again, just understand that, you know, whatever we're deciding, if we decide anything today on this, it's still just deciding this is what we're putting in the draft. Uh, you know, we still have to have a public hearing. This is not a final decision by any means.
Doug, I have a question. Um, if we went with the proposed language where it would affect all and you didn't make the distinction about partitions?
Mm-hmm.
Would the, where that would normally be an administrative approval, would it still come to the planning commission because you're having to grant the waiver?
Yeah, any, any subdivision that has to have a waiver has to come before you for approval.
Even though the, even though the waiver's covered by the fact that they, they're going with Plan B with the sprinkler, it would still need to come?
Yes, yes, ma'am, it would.
We're gonna see it either way.
That's correct.
If you took the sprinklers completely out, that would deem the property in the county that doesn't have fire protection for major subdivisions undevelopable. Is that correct?
That's certainly, I mean, that, in effect, you could.
Pulling the tool chest more or less.
You could do that, yes, sir. If you just said, we're not, if you can't support fire hydrant in this area, we're just not gonna let you develop. That is an option. Yes, sir.
I like alternative one better than that because it gives that option. Somebody can develop that property where if we just took sprinklers completely out, the property's not gonna be developed until the water is there. Personally, but I give, that give, like I said, another tool, another avenue to get to where you're going.
Doug, it, it strikes me that staff and this commission spends an awful lot of time looking at these waivers and I can only imagine the amount of paperwork and the time and expense both on the part of staff and the applicant has to spend applying for the waiver. Is there any way to write these so this can be handled administratively? Uh, when somebody comes in and they got this proper documentation from CUD or whatever it is that they need, that can, that not be signed off in the office?
I don't know if, actually if state law will allow that, looking at this, the, the law. I think that anything that requires a waiver has to be done at the planning commission as I understand the law. Uh, so I mean, I get, the quick answer to your question is, can that be done? I don't think it can. I mean, that's certainly something I can look at.
Might be written that it's a, that, that, that it's required a waiver. I mean, can it not be written that if these conditions exist, you know, if you supply this documentation, then it's approved? I mean, then it's completely okay.
Well, I think from a local stand, I mean, you're looking at it more from a local standpoint. If the state law says if a waiver is required from these regulations and the planning commission has to approve it, I mean, I can write all the regulations I want saying, oh, staff can do all this. That goes contrary to what state law says and I don't, wouldn't wanna be in that position to do something that's contrary to state law, which is why the waivers come to, to you for review, because I don't think that's.
Conversation before because we thought it was pretty ridiculous because if you can't support a fire hydrant, you can't support a fire hydrant. But I remember four or five years ago, we had this same conversation, like, why couldn't you guys just prove it that these people move on instead of wait till the next meeting comes around?
I'll be more than happy to look into that further, but as I understand state law, if it requires a waiver, it has to come to the planning commission. And that's not just with a fire, that's with any waiver. I mean, just regardless of what waiver we're talking about. Now granted, we probably see more of these than we see any others. The other ones we typically see are off-site soils waivers or something like that, but uh, I don't, it doesn't specify, it just says waiver requirement.
It is quicker than it used to be because the full commission meets twice a month. Now, we used to have the committee structure and the full commission on it once a month, so you can get it done in two weeks instead of four weeks theoretically now.
At our last meeting, um, we asked Doug to come back with these alternatives, so we actually got three to choose from, the way it's written in the current draft, and then these two alternatives. So there's really three that we're looking at and, and, uh, he's done his job and asks what we've asked him to do, so it's our job now to give him some guidance and move on. So what do you think?
I like one, which is basically the current draft.
So you like the one with the four lots?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same as we've had.
Explain the partition again, Doug.
Yeah, the way we're looking at, uh, and I'll kinda back up a little bit to, to, to answer your question. The, what, the way we're gonna be looking at subdivisions under the proposed regulations is basically broken down into three categories. You have a major plat, a minor plat, and a partition. A major plat are those particular plats that show certain improvements like right-of-way dedication or right-of-way extension, building roads, uh, construction of utilities, like the larger trunk lines, those kinda things. Minor subdivisions, uh, are the next level down, if you will. Uh, it doesn't matter how many lots majors or minors will be, it just depends on the type of improvements that are gonna be done. Minor subdivision would be there's an existing stretch of road and somebody wants to put 10 lots on it, but they're not necessarily extending utilities, they're not building any new roads and any new right-of-way. Now, you just got 10 lots and they, everything else is met, that, they're not doing anything that would kick it into a major, basically. Partitions are anything that staff could approve administratively. Staff does have the authority to approve one and two-lot subdivision plats administratively that do not require waivers from the planning commission. We are allowed to do that. Anything that requires waiver does have to come before the, the planning commission as, again, as I understand state law, which is why you've seen more and then more of them in the, in the not-too-distant past. So, uh, those, basically a partition would be something that would, you wouldn't necessarily see if everything was in order with it. You know, that the fire hydrant was in 1,000 feet, everything was fine, they didn't need any of the waivers, they had soil sites, everything. That's something we could look at it as staff and say, okay, these are the changes you need to make, Mr. Engineer, uh, Ms. Engineer, whoever, and make these changes, submit it back to us and we can approve it from there. But those are generally plats that you don't have to, to take a look at, unless they require waivers, then you do.
So the difference between a partition and, uh, the four-lot alternative is that still up to two lots, staff can make an in-house decision. Uh, and if it was over two lots and under four, uh, then it would come before the planning commission, correct?
Well, even if they're required a waiver, uh, even a two-lot, a one or two-lot would still have to come before you. But, I mean, that, that's really the only, again, it's, I think either will function pretty much the same that we're functioning right now. I just like the partition just because to me it's a cleaner break. It doesn't seem as arbitrary as the four lots.
The other thing partition does, and, and this is why I would, I would support either the proposed regulation, which is all or partition, is that it's consistent with the new language in the guidelines, because we're retiring the four-lot language and so if you've got somebody who's approaching, you know, the regulation's new and, or you've got new planning commission who's approaching, you know, the language new, it'll make sense to them where the four might not, you know, once our history is gone, you know, we understand why it would be there. So, so I think it would be cleaner going forward if we either had it all or use partition, which is, which will also encompass those people that we've tended to be a little more lenient to, which has been family members. So, but, but it doesn't have to be a family member and we're not, we can't, we don't police that and I understand that, but I think that's more consistent with what we've been doing historically. So, so I, I like either proposed all or partition.
If God's got a three-acre lot out there and he wants to cut it in three tracks, build three houses, he's gonna have to do them one at a time, do a petition each time and get out of the sprinklers or he's gonna have to put sprinklers in them.
Well, if there's no fire hydrant, if there's no fire hydrant there, then, yes. Now, that would, that would, that wouldn't be a partition, that would be a minor plat. That'd have to come before you anyway, because three lots would be over.
But he would have to have sprinkles.
Yeah, he would, in that, in that example, you're right.
How is four an arbitrary number? I mean, do we not still use three or four on our lots off of private easement?
Yes, we do.
Is that an arbitrary number?
Well, that's exactly, yeah, it's the existing regulation. I, I just said it could be seen that way. I'm not, I mean, I understand why we're using it.
I think there's a whole lot of places in our codes that has a number of three or four lots. There's, that's that break and, and.
And the break was done because of.
If you're gonna get that concerned about it being arbitrary number, you're gonna have to tear the whole thing apart, in my opinion.
Like I said, either one, I think, I prefer the partition. I think either will work and will function the same way we're functioning now. I mean, you bring up a good point. We left the, uh, the language for the private easements pretty much the same. You know, we did change a little bit of it, but the numbers, we left the same.
Jones will write somebody for having so many inoperable vehicles and there's a number. It's an arbitrary number. You know, there's arbitrary numbers in all of our codes and all that, you have to pick a number, you know, for, for a whole lot of stuff.
Doug, how does this affect installation of a fire hydrant? So even if it's a partition or a three-lots subdivision, they still have to put in a fire hydrant if they can?
Well, if they, if they're, right, if they're, if a fire hydrant can be installed and it can be supported, then they install one. I mean, this, this isn't giving them an option, well, I don't feel like putting a fire hydrant and I'd rather sprinkle the homes. It, that's not meant for that.
Yeah.
Basically is, if it can support a hydrant, the hydrant's installed and then you don't have to worry about the sprinklers.
One-house rotation or whatever.
That's correct. Yeah, yeah, that, that doesn't change. If, if it can support a hydrant, the hydrant needs to be installed. And that's, yeah, in, in general, I, I think the, the way the commission's really handled this, especially since, since I've been director, has been if the line can support a hydrant, and, and I tell applicants this, you know, they come in and say, well, I don't wanna spend however much money it is to install a fire hydrant. I know the line can support, I just don't wanna install it. I'll just tell them, I said, look, you can ask. I said, but if the planning commission knows the line can support a hydrant, they're not gonna, you're probably not gonna waive that. Uh, so that's, that, that's just been the planning commission's practice.[1716.66] If it can support it, it needs to be installed. And again, if there is an operable fire hydrant and one can be installed there, then the sprinkler requirement doesn't apply. You know, that, that, that's, it just, it meets the regulations at that point.
I have a lot of questions about fire hydrants. When is, I, I see a lot of them around the county, some of which, you know, I understand there's different classifications, and our rules say 500 gallons per minute water volume. I'm assuming that a lot of these fire hydrants that we currently have do not meet the 500 gallon, or how does this 500 gallons fall into the scale of available-
Well, I think that's the minimum, and I may have to defer to Ms. Wood, she's, she's in the, the audience from CUD, as I understand, that's the minimum that state requires. Do you want to address that, you're, you're better positioned than I am to do that?
Jennifer Wood from CUD, and to answer your question on that, it's, I think in the regulations that you guys have, it's 500 gallons per minute for the county. For us, as I explained maybe a month or two ago, we also have to maintain 20 PSI per state regulations. So when we look at the, the proposal of a fire hydrant being installed, we're looking at what is regulated as far as the county goes on whether or not we can support a hydrant, excuse me, and that would be 500 gallons per minute as minimum or above. We also are looking at the state requirement to have, maintain 20 PSI for our current customers at the meter.
So can we assume that every fire hydrant that we see that's in the county, existing fire hydrant, can pump 500 gallons per minute?
That gets a little bit, I guess, a little complicated, only because, like I was describing before, whenever you guys had some questions, I think that we're doing a little better job at making sure that all of our customers within a zone are falling under that requirement. I'm not saying we did a terrible job before, I just think we have new technologies available now that we haven't always had. So I use a hydraulic modeling software, and I plug that in, hey, if we had this development here with a proposed usage, would be able to sustain fire hydrant of 500 gallons or more, and also maintain that 20 pounds in the system currently. So I think there are going to be some hydrants that maybe fall below that standard, and a case in point would be in the Fosterville area, we had to throttle back some hydrants because when they were turned on, some people at the higher elevations would drop below that 20 pounds. So from this point, the last year or so, we've been, or, or more, we've been using that hydraulic modeling software as, as another way to look at what, how that proposed fire hydrant along with the development would affect the system as a whole. So we've had to go back and do some throttling of fire hydrants in that case to maintain that 20 PSI, if that answers your question.
To, to something you said then, and something I think you said a couple of meetings ago, if we approve a development on, you know, halfway out 231 South, then do, does your modeling capabilities now, does it allow you to say it's going to kill a fire hydrant over on Rucker Road or, or something like that?
That's what I'm looking at. So we've got 13 different pressure zones in CUD, since we serve all, all of the counties, so all of them have their, it's kind of like a mini, a mini utility on their own, because they have different hydraulics, because they're fed by a different pump and a different sized tank, or maybe no tank at all. And so the hydraulics are different depending on where you are in the county. So we're able to look at, I'm able to look at with some certainty of, of what something is going to do should it go in. So is it going to affect the suction side of a pump station? Is it going to affect water quality? Is it going to affect pressures and that kind of thing, flows available and that kind of thing? So nothing's guaranteed in life, right? But we try to do the best that we can to determine how this is going to affect what's currently there.
So as you report to us in the future, if we approve a development, you, you should be able to tell us that four miles, five miles down the road, that all the fire hydrants, it, it will or will not affect any of the old fire hydrants, and of course, you'll have to maintain the 20 PSI at each individual meter.
And I'm doing that now, when I'm looking at them. I do a hydraulic calculation in my hand, and I also, which is traditional, and I also will pop that into the model as well. And of course, the model is static, okay, so it's not dynamic. I can run it dynamic both ways, but it's kind of taking the less of the two, worst-case scenario, and that's what you want to design for, worst-case scenario. So that, I do take that into account, because we have to maintain that 20 PSI for the customers we have, so I can't say, yes, we can put this in, or this subdivision's going to come in and we can maintain that 500 gallons per minute if we're dropping below 20 PSI somewhere down the line, whether it's a mile or 500 feet or 10 miles.
Yeah, that's something you said, and it concerned me that we were killing, you know, we might be killing a fire hydrant over here that'd been there for 20 years when we approved a development three miles down the road.
And that's, and that's for, when the developers come in, you know, sometimes they have to go back and upgrade a line, that's happened before, to be able to maintain the hydraulics back to their subdivision and also maintain the hydraulics that are current. So that's something that I myself look at, and also our contract engineer looks at whenever we're talking about a proposed development, is how it's affecting today, how we're able to maintain what we have, and also be able to meet whatever requirements that they have for the, for the proposed development, so.
Jennifer, go ahead, go ahead.
When you make changes to a fire hydrant, what, what is your notification process? Like, do you let the county fire chief know?
We do.
Do you let the community leaders know, planning, I'm just trying to figure out what's the notification process when changes are made?
What we did, and I'm just going off Fosterville, because it's been our biggest area that we've changed, we had contact with the, with the volunteer fire department in that area. And also, we do the same thing whenever we have a fire hydrant that's out of service for some reason, whether it has to be repaired, or say, a, a line was put in, but it hasn't been disinfected, so it's not in service just yet. So we, we let the, the fire departments know, so they know whether or not a fire hydrant is serviceable or not.
So any fire hydrant in the county that's out of service, you guys have plans to put them back in service?
Absolutely.
Okay.
If they're out of service, there may be, you know, we have a lot of dead-in-the-water, so-to-speak developments out there, where they've put in some of the infrastructure already, but it was never put online, so it was never disinfected, and it's not currently in service. There may be a valve off from, that's separating the system from that proposed development, what have you. In those areas, you may have some infrastructure, including fire hydrants in place. For the most part, the fire departments know that if it, the cap hasn't been painted, then likely that hydrant is not serviceable, but we stay in contact. I have a guy on my team who stays in contact with the local fire department, whether it's, you know, city or county for volunteers.
What, what I was going to ask you, we were talking about putting sprinklers in, in a subdivision that hasn't been, a subdivision hasn't been there before, and you're talking about maintaining the water pressure that you've got there. So you put in the subdivision out here in the rural area of, of Rutherford County. Is there a possibility the pressure wouldn't be there to support those sprinkler systems?
I guess I'd first have to know what the pressure was required to maintain that, and some of your larger, like, commercial-type development, their pressures that they require for the different type head sprinklers, it's going to be a little bit more, I would suspect, I'm a fire sprinkler engineer, than you would for a residence. Some things that we do for, for residents that requires fire sprinkler service is, instead of putting in a typical 5/8 or 3/4 meter, we put in a full 1-inch, so that they would have that volume, larger volume coming through the meter to service their fire sprinkler system. It's something I have looked at, if somebody knows what the, if somebody can tell me what their required is, I can say, well, this is what we typically maintain at that area. But like I said, we're required to maintain 20 pounds per state regulation, so if they need something greater than that, say 50 or 60 pounds, it's just going to be determined on the hydraulics for that particular system, and I can share that information if somebody gets me information to be able to tell them one way or the other.
Thank you.
You say the 500 gallons and the 20 pounds, what if you've got two fires a half a mile apart that are in the same zone, and they're pulling out of both hydrants at the same time?
I can do it-
That would probably drop below your 20 pounds.
Absolutely, or if you have a line break. That's what I was saying, nothing is, I hate to say that, but nothing really is guaranteed, because the, the system changes every day. You go out and flow a hydrant today, you might get a little bit different flow or a little bit different pressure, depending on what's going, what else is going on in the system that day. The tank could be a little lower, you know, or you could have a, a main break down the road, or some of these things that just, you can't help for, you know, that that's happening. And so the best thing I can say is, and we've been in contact with the fire department, probably get it a little bit, you know, a little bit better as we go along as far as coordinating if they are fighting a fire, call us, because we can tell you, I mean, you might be right over a pressure zone, excuse me, a pressure zone line, where you might be trying to get out of an orange-top hydrant versus a green or blue-top hydrant, just because the hydraulics are different, maybe a mile down the road. So just some coordination as far as what, what water is available would go a long way as well, to let, if they let us know, like, where the fires are happening, to be able to direct them to a hydrant that is going to serve, serve them better potentially.
Jennifer, could you quickly just give me the color code examples of the tops of the fire hydrants?
We've got red, orange, green, and blue. Red is basically 500 gallons per minute or less, or up to 500 gallons a minute. Orange is 500, between 500 and 999 gallons per minute. Green is 1,000, between 1,000 and 1,499. And then your blue-top hydrant is 15 gallons per minute and above.
Actually, not-
Yes, sir.
Within the last year or two, I guess, I think the Murfreesboro Post ran a story about, about fire hydrants and, and pressure in the tops. There was actually a schematic in the article that we saved, and I can forward that to everybody that has all that information shows and everything, so that you can all have that for your records. It, we, we, I printed one out for myself, because it's, because I never know what they are while looking at them. I will say too, just, sorry, just real quick, that any plans that we receive in our office, we scan and send over to CUD, to Jennifer, and they do a review every week, so when we do our staff comments to the engineers, after we look at plans, it also includes our comments as well. So if there are any issues with water pressure or anything like that, we should know about them before they ever get to the Planning Commission.
Anything?
I'm almost opening up a, a different can of worms, but I hate to miss an opportunity here. So we wouldn't be installing any red-top fire hydrants, because they're less than 500. But I'm assuming that since a water line is basically a conduit for growth, in that you put in a water line, eventually houses are going to start to spring up on either side of it, until it gets to a point where CUD can't meet that 20-pound min, minimum or whatever they're, and then they install a pump station or whatever they have to do to service all of those houses. And then it might be eligible for the 500 or greater, the orange top that we need in the neighborhood, but it was never installed on that, on that street, because it didn't meet the 500 at the time those homes were being built. And then we missed an opportunity to get a fire hydrant on that street, I mean, that's just something that we have to consider. Are you following me?
No, not yet. Are you still?
I know where you're going. I remember at Stackhorn, we had them plum for the hydrants and leave the stub just underground, where they just come and bolt the hydrants on. I remember that, and that may be where you're going.
Yeah, that's where I'm going. I don't want to, I don't want to miss a fire hydrant in the future.
Put your valve, put everything and cap it, and then when the fire, the flow got there, all they did was go ahead and bolt the, bolt the hydrant on right there.
Now, who's responsible for putting in that fire hydrant when the pressure comes up?
I believe, didn't we have a-
Well, in Stackhorn situation, I believe that was a planned development, and I believe that was part of their conditions, now-
Part of the conditions that there was, you know, a retainer or something, or-
Yeah, as I recall, now-
Maybe even for the hydrant, too.
Now, quite frankly, a development like that comes along today, we probably don't even recommend something like that be approved, considering, I mean, that was, that's been a few years ago now, but, but that, as I recall, the developer was still going to be responsible for providing the fire hydrants in that particular development, because it was a planned development. But turn it today, if that development comes in, we probably advise that, that not be approved.
I like the idea of the stub.
Yeah, oh, yes.
At some point in time, there'll be enough water pressure, it may not be in my lifetime, but it'll be sometime.
I think we had, had, I think part of the condition for that one was escrowing the fire hydrants, too.
It was something, I, I forget exactly, but it was something like that, yes, sir.
But that's, like I said, it's a little bit different argument from where we're at, but, yeah, and a, and a sprinkled subdivision, I'd, I'd love to see that stubbed up, you know, that's pennies on the dollar when they're doing it while they're laying that line.
I think most of the time, when we run into a situation like that, and she may correct me, if CUD sees that, they require, as you said, they require them to upscale that line to serve that subdivision, before they will give their approval, sign off on it. Now, in this case of Stackhorn, they could, even if they put the line in, they didn't have the tank and stuff available to support, to give the pressure. That was one of the reasons that those stubs came in, because the, the developer, even like, it said, even if they'd put in the up, larger line, CUD did not have the facilities or the adequate supply to meet the requirements at that time.
And we've got two different things, we've got pressure and flow. Sometimes it's one or the other, sometimes it's both. So if, depending on elevations and what the static pressure is going to be, if you're starting lower, say you're starting at like 40 or 50 pounds, as far as pressure goes, depending on what size line you've got, you are really killing your available pressure by having smaller lines, because you're losing that head loss through there. But you also have a flow problem with the smaller lines as well. So there's kind of two different issues where you might have, it kind of just depends on what you're able to sustain, depending on where you are. Like I said, we've got 13 different pressure zones, so, so it's kind of like a mini utility for each of those, the hydraulics are quite a bit different.
Doug, how would the sprinkler system affect those residents who are on a well? And how will we, how will we measure what their pressure is? Or if it's serviceable, or, you know?
Yeah, and that may be, kind of think of that as something we talked about. If, there may be some situations where, I mean, yeah, if they're on a well, they may not be able to get that kind of a pressure. I think in that situation, we just have to build in something that says, you know, yeah, or we could just, yeah, I mean, it's part of the, whatever alternative we go, we can just build in, and all subdivisions, like, well, if you use the four or more lots example, all subdivision, four or more lots, or those on a system, those particular lots that are served by a well that cannot meet the pressure requirements for the system, and I think the only way to know that would be, they'd have to have some test run to see if something like that could even-
Because they could have a reserve tank or something else?
Right. I think that's something we could build into the regulation pretty easily, though.
Okay. You might want to make a note of that.
Thank you, Jennifer. We have had, I don't know how many hours of discussion on sprinklers, and our goal today was to take a look at these alternatives and make a decision. I'm not saying that what we've had was inappropriate, it was not, it was appropriate, but let's see if we can get back together and make a decision on, or at least some type of a consensus on, on the way the draft is written, or on Alternative 1, which is four, or on Alternative 2, which is the-
Partitioned.
So, so I, I don't know the best way to go about this, but I know that there's different commissioners that feel a little bit differently, so let's just, I don't know what the best way to do it is.
Just a consensus, I think, would be.
What's that?
It's like a consensus, which one they think is best.
That's right, I don't know how the best way to get to that consensus is, though.
Well, you know how at full commission, when we have to vote for somebody, we've got multiple options, you just go around the room and you say what your vote is. I mean, why don't we just poll the table?
Is that the way you want to do it?
That's fine.
Poll everybody. I'm good either way, but poll everybody.
One, one, two, and three. One is the way the draft is written.
All subdivisions.
Right. Two would be the four plus, and three would be the partitions, okay?
One more question on the partitions. It, it will, it kind of protects that individual that owns 50 acres on the top of a hill in Bradable or Last Catches or Milton that wants to give two acres to their daughter. They're protected.
Yeah, either, either option will do that, yeah, well, I say two or three.
That's my main goal in this.
Right, either two or three, either if you go with the four lots, or if you go with partition, either one will do that.
What if they're not partitioning anything, if they just have an acre?
If it's an existing acre of land?
Yeah, they own an existing acre of land, not being partitioned off, they just own an acre of land out on Jefferson Pike or somewhere, and there's no fire hydrant.
Well, then, I mean, the lot's already created at that point, so-
Are they grandfathered?
I mean, it probably, in that situation, it probably would be. I mean, you know, you'd almost have to do it by a case-by-case basis. If it turns out that it was-
There's not a petition taking place.
Right, there's nothing taking place, they just come in for a building permit and we probably just issue one. Now, if we found out it was illegally created, that's a whole different ballgame, but, and that does happen from time to time, but-
Well, that's why I like the four, that's a number, you know?
Well, I mean, that would, I mean, the situation, yeah.
Somebody owns a lot out there they've owned for 30 years, and they just think, I'll go build my dream home, but it wasn't legally sectioned off in 1985, after the codes were done.
Right, and understand, too, that this is just for those lots that are under five acres, any subdivision law. If it's over five acres, it's not considered a subdivision under state law.
There's possibly one acre out there somewhere.
Right, just as long as everybody understands that.
We're going to have Gail call the roll, your answer is one, two, or three, okay?
So one is all subdivisions as currently written, two would be the four lots or greater, and three would be the partition, just to make sure everybody understands that that's what we're, we're doing, okay?
Is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
All right.
I'm good, I'm good with whatever we come up with, how about that?
Gail?
Rhonda Allen.
Three.
Jim Mavorwater.
Two.
Veronica Buchanan.
Three.
Will Jordan.
Two.
Mike Kush.
Oh, three.
Craig Lynch.
Craig Lynch?
Two.
Pettis Reed?
Two.
Mike Watt?
Three.
Jeff Phillips?
Three.
It's five threes, four twos.
Not much of a consensus, but I guess it is.
Well, and like I said, this is, all we're doing at this point, that's how we're gonna word the language. We still have to have a public hearing on the whole document, so, I mean, that can, this can be changed. For now, that's how the draft will be reflected. So, so I guess at this point, we need to decide, I know we're still wanting to get some information on the, the base stone and all that. We can go ahead and advertise for more public, for more work sessions, that's not a problem. Well, how does the commission feel about scheduling a public hearing for July? I mean, I think we could still work out those other issues while still saying, okay, we're gonna have a public hearing in July. I mean, it's up to the commission how they want to handle that.
Let's schedule our final work session on Monday night, June 10.
Okay.
And cover the engineering questions that we had earlier.
Okay.
And then do the public hearing, and that would probably be in a July meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, if we don't advertise it before the June 10th meeting, we could possibly make the day meeting in July a night meeting now, I don't know if that'll work or not, this public safety meets on the same night.
Let's don't change day and nights.
All right. Well, then, if, if that's okay, if that's what you want to do, we'd be looking probably at August before we did anything, which is fine, just, just so you all understand.
Is that okay with everybody?
June 10th is what now, morning or evening?
That's an evening meeting.
June 10th is an evening meeting, and we'll have our, hopefully, our final work session. And then advertise for the-
August.
Public hearing and our August meeting.
Yeah, that'd be August the-
The August the 12?
12th, yes, sir.
Monday, August the 12.
Yes, sir.
Is that decent?
I think that works.
Okay. Anything else today, Gail?
Uh, no, sir, I don't think I had anything else.
Anything else from anyone else?
I have one quick question. Very briefly, tell us what you did at the battlefield, because I was on, I was gonna make it.
Oh, man, you missed it.
Well, we got really cool badges.
We're junior Rangers.
No, we met with Ms. Gail Hazelwood, she's the new superintendent out there at the, at the park, has been for several months now, I guess, and Gibb Backland, we met with him, he does, he's been there for quite a while. They gave us a tour of the, of their facility, as well as the, a lot of the areas of the